That is so. I'm sorry about having.
Oh, it's okay.
A nice little cable over me.
You look great. You're glowing.
There you go.
Yes.
Are you the acting chair today?
I'm chairing today because Commissioner Cherebaka is out. Yeah.
Madam Vice Chair, we're live.
We are live. I love to do that. Welcome to the Board of Finance. I call this May 23rd, 2023 Hybrid Meeting of the Board of Finance to order. Madam Cherebaka is excused and Madam Treasurer Burce will appear remotely. Um, approval of minutes. Uh, Board of Finance, February 21, 23. Board of Finance meeting minutes, a motion to approve. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in, oh, um, please, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. I think because we're all here, we can just do that. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great. Move. Now we will move on to the presentation by Madam Treasurer and our awesome staff here. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ryan Travelstead. I'm the Deputy Treasurer here in the County Treasurer's Office. And I want to turn it over to Madam Treasurer, who is joining us remotely from Portland, Oregon at the Government Finance Officers Association Annual Conference. So Madam Treasurer, take it away.
Thank you, Deputy Travelstead, and thank you, Madam Chair Barboa and members of the Board of Finance.
Now.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Wonderful. Well, good afternoon. My name is Nancy Burce, the County Treasurer of Burnleyo County. We're going to go to this quarter's report. And I'm already on the second page. Today's meeting is for the third quarter of fiscal year 23, which covers January of 2023 through March 31st of 2023. Let's see, going to property tax collections. Of course, this is the standard report. So we're looking at 2022 collections. And again, January through March 31st, we've already passed the first half collections. And we're kind of in a lull right now in reporting for this, for this quarter, for the second half. So not, not too much to report there. But we did collect for a total of 492 million there on that last line. We still have to collect 325 million. So next page, the property tax collections in percentage means that that amount is about 60, 60%. If you remember the last meeting, it hovered after first half collections around 56%. Well, Deputy Travelstead, I'm going to toss it to you because I think you have some updated numbers.
Correct. Yes. Thank you, Madam Treasurer. So yeah, as the, the second half property tax collection cycle ended May 10th, so we're still collecting payments, so there'd be some delinquent payments that come in. But as of today, we've collected in April and May around 289 million, which will bring that 60% up to 95.6% as of today. And so again, there's still some delinquent collection processes that happened in the month of June. So right on track with prior, prior year actual collections as well.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. The next page is our high-level operational dashboard. The things I want to highlight for you are the delinquent collections. Deputy Travelstead just referenced that, that we do continue to collect delinquent accounts. So that amount for this quarter was a whopping 13.9 million. So again, I always recognize the delinquent department because they do such a fantastic job. And I always want to highlight that for you. Also, the call volume, of course, you can see has backed off for the quarter just to 6, 6,000 calls, almost 7,000. But that's much reduced from last quarter where we had first half collections. Also, you can see the payment channels on the bottom right, which kind of tells you how we got those collections, how they came into us. That's really important because we want to use that wonderful merchant services staff and, and vendors that, that do this for us. And that software is so fantastic. Look at that number of online payments. 7,000 for just this quarter, and it's not even a collection quarter. So you can really see how when I say we collect every day 24/7, 365, it seems like you can really see how, how that helps. And of course, in person and mail, we still get it a lot of that way. 17,000 came in person or by mail. And then, of course, our escrow and mortgage files, 465 payments came in that way. So that's, that's really nice to see. And that all translates to the next page of the collections and how they get distributed. There's really no change. We're very steady on that. As a matter of fact, the percentages didn't even change. So you can see that education is the highest beneficiary of all of our property taxes. And then we go to the county, then the city and villages, health with UNM Hospital. And then in a tie there for 4% each is the state and some environmental entities there. So we can always tell that story that property taxes really do go and stay in the community when you look at the beneficiaries of who gets the, the tax collections. Let's see, the next page, I think, is bank balances and collateral. And this is very important. We were talking about it here at the convention just today, yesterday, actually. And especially with some, some news about banks that have closed. But I want Deputy Travelstead to go through this.
Great. Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Yeah, this, as Madam Treasurer mentioned, this is the, a report of our bank balances and the collateral associated with those bank balances. I'm happy to, to report that all, all accounts meet the 50% statutory collateral requirement. And then there's one small piece there, the Burnleyo County Affordable Housing Nonprofit. We has a, we have a designated bank account there, and there was $1,200 of uncollateralized balances at the, as of March 31st. That was promptly corrected to be get to the 100% collateralization requirement that we like for that account. So it's kind of a, a routine process that we follow to review the collateral pledged on our, all of our bank accounts to ensure that it's sufficient. So that in the event that a depository institution that we have county funds in fails, that we would recoup those securities that they have pledged as collateral so we could recoup a portion of our balances. Next slide here will give a, a quick kind of economic update in a high level. Our county's investment advisors, government portfolio advisors can speak much more in depth to this. But in general, the Federal Reserve is still raising interest rates. That's, as a result, the inflation is showing signs of cooling. It's continuing to show those signs. But as a result, there's, you know, maybe some pressure that's being put on, on regional banks with some high, high-profile bank closures that happened during the quarter. There's some, still some talk of, you know, is this going to end up in a, in a recession? Or maybe is the Fed piloting us, the US economy into a soft landing? I guess only time will tell, but there's a little bit more of a consensus that we might be going towards that soft landing. And then the most, yeah, really kind of pressing issue that I can see on the county's portfolios are the, the debt ceiling conversations on the federal level. And if the US were to default on its debt, yeah, that, I wouldn't really even have enough, couldn't imagine the, the implications that, that would have on the, the US economy. Hopefully, we don't have to face that. Not likely, historically speaking. It's, it's, the debt ceiling has been raised and the Treasury's been allowed to issue more debt. So yeah, I guess we'll, time, time, uh, time, time will tell. The next slide here shows the overall portfolio structure. This remains unchanged from the previous quarter. We have our different buckets, the operating funds, the two buckets there are highly liquid and liquid, the bond proceeds bucket, and then the core bucket that's a little bit managed, a little bit further out. So again, we've gone through this slide in previous quarters, kind of describes in a visual representation of, of why we have a investment program. It's essentially due to timing differences between when money comes in and when money goes out. So when we recognize those timing differences, we'll take some of those funds to invest them to earn some interest in a safe manner. So that then, once it comes time to pay out, then we have a little bit of extra resources to provide additional services. The next slide here details the balances of each portfolio as of March 31st. As you can see, our, our bank balance, we had 8.3 million. Goes down to the highly liquid with 86, roughly 86 million. And we go into our liquid bucket, which is used to match all of our known payroll and debt service expenditures. There was 296 million in there, 325 million in the core, and then 24 million of unspent bond proceeds that are invested, kind of awaiting those payments to be made to, to vendors. And as you can see here, I'd like to, to draw a point here to that, the third column over the percent of total, as you can see in the bank balance, we keep around 1% of the, the total portfolio in the bank balances. Generally, that's a little bit, we've kept a little bit higher balance than that. But then due to some of the regional bank pressures and things of that nature, we've decided to manage that balance a little bit tighter. So you'll start to see that balance just a little bit lower than, than typical. The next couple of slides detail the invest, the underlying investment holdings of each bucket. Here in the highly liquid, this is all less than, all of the, the accounts mature essentially real time. If we needed access to these funds today, we would have access to this 86.4 million. Today, that's, I think it's around $128 million that we have today. So this was again, as a snapshot as of March 31st. So in my opinion, we have sufficient liquidity to, to kind of weather some storms. If the, the Treasury does, doesn't raise the debt limit, and we have to draw down some of our investments to fund bills while we wait for some of those, that stuff on the federal level to get resolved. The next slide here goes over the detail of the liquid portfolio. So again, we have around 67 million that matures less than 30 days. This again, as of March 31st. And then between 30 days to a year, $218 million that we can then use to pay for debt service and payroll expenses. So, so very well managed to known operating outflows. So in my opinion, very safe. The next slide here will go over the core portfolio holdings. So this is where GPA, GPA Government Portfolio Advisors, Rashad and Deanne, they're on the call. Also, they'll join in and talk about the, the strategy for the coming quarter. But this is where they kind of hone in their expertises on this core portfolio. And this slide here details where the underlying holdings and then the maturity structure of this portfolio. Then the next slide details the bond proceeds portfolio. And again, this portfolio, it's timed due to known or anticipated drawdowns from vendors. So again, when the residents vote yes to, for the county to issue general obligation bonds, the county then sells those bonds. And in between the time that we sell the bonds to paying contractors to pave roads or to build buildings, the Treasurer's Office invests those funds so that we have some additional resources to have those, help those projects continue along. So this is very, managed very narrowly, I would say, just based off anticipated draws from those vendors. And then finally, there's a graphical representation of, of the liquidity in each portfolio. And the farthest left column shows that between all portfolios, we have around $164 million available to us that matures less than 30 days. 314 million there in the 30 days to one year. And that's a, a really healthy piece there. So I mean, that's in a GPA, we'll, we'll speak to this a little bit in their section. But I think that that 314 is a little bit too high. We probably have some capacity to maybe deploy a little bit of that further out to maybe lock in some of the higher interest rates that are in the market right now in anticipation, you know, at some point, interest rates will come, start coming back down. It's just kind of like a never-ending cycle, though, kind of rise and then go back down. So this might be a good time to take advantage of putting, deploying some funds a little bit further out than that 30-day to one-year time play, timeframe. But GPA will, can speak to that in more detail. And then.
On a couple of sites before, you had said about the second, I don't think you need to go back, but, that you said something about to, if we needed medical, or not medical, you said something about debt or salaries? Is that saying that those are the only things that can be used out of that?
Madam Chair, that's a good question. And, and no, there's, on the Treasurer's Office side, we, we don't have restrictions on where those, those investments are for. It's generally more kind of countywide. And so we just know that we, there's two knowns essentially, is we know payroll is going to happen every couple of weeks. And we know the debt service payments are going to happen on a schedule. And so once we know those, when we have some excess liquidity, we'll buy investments to perfectly match with those so that we know that those are funded well into the future. And that's where, where that would come in. But thank you for the question. The next slide here shows our net investment income by quarter. And as you can see here on the third quarter, we earned a 6, $6 million in investment income, which is a substantial increase over the prior years. And that's related to the change in market interest rates essentially. And then, yeah, we're going to start taking, as the longer the interest rates stay higher, the more of the portfolio will mature and reinvest at those higher interest rates, which is good for the county long-term. So we're taking, definitely taking advantage of the increased market interest rates there. Yeah, exactly. And then the next slide here, I'll turn it over to Rashad from our, the county's Investment Advisor, Government Portfolio Advisors. Rashad, are you there?
Good afternoon, and I am here. Yeah, thank you for having me.
Great.
All right. Well, we can jump right into it. The first thing we like to look at in every quarter is compliance. Just making sure that we're compliant with our policy. And as you can see here, we want this picture to remain uneventful. And it is, your, the county's portfolio is perfectly compliant with the policy as we look at it over the quarter. We can jump to the next slide to just do a quarterly review. Here, we just like to look at, how did the portfolio evolve over the quarter? The top left table shows you the book yield change from 1231, 2022 to the end of March. And then the bottom left just shows you the market value change. And really, that just shows you kind of echoing what Deputy Treasurer Travelstead said in terms of the market environment. We saw a pretty substantial increase in book yield as the portfolios were really set up to take advantage of the increased interest rate environment. So as maturities rolled off of the portfolio, we were able to reinvest at higher interest rates. And then, in addition, we were able to take some existing capital and deploy it short-term to earn higher rates kind of under that one-year mark. So if you look at the table on the right-hand side, we can look at actual transactions that have occurred since January 1st of this year. The weighted average book yield of the transactions in the laddered liquidity portfolio was at a 5.12%. A really great yield, taking advantage of the short end of the yield curve that this bill significantly inverted. And especially in the laddered liquidity, those transactions earned an incremental $145,000 over the existing money market fund. So that was just a really good opportunity in the portfolios, the buckets. So we, so we say we're structured really well to take advantage of, of the current interest rate environment. The reinvestments in the core and then the reinvestment of bond proceeds to match existing cash outflows also came in at, you know, very reasonable rates at about 445 and 493. And over the next couple of slides, we'll kind of talk about the forward-looking strategy in each one of those portfolio components. And here's just really a summary of how we think about those strategic components and any changes to our current targets and recommendations across the highly liquid portfolio, the laddered liquidity portfolio, and then the operating core. So the top grid is going to reflect the existing par amount as of March 31st and the existing book yield. And then the target and minimum, maximum recommendations that we have for the county over the next quarter. The bottom grid there is the existing recommendations. And so to summarize what, what we've done at GPA and especially working closely with the county is really evaluate the, how the portfolios have evolved, not only the last quarter, but over the last year or so. And then really identify upcoming cash flows and upcoming constraints. And kind of how do we poise ourselves to manage interest rate cycles as we go forward and manage cash flows appropriately and remain conservative while also kind of optimizing return in the portfolio? So putting all those together, our main recommendations as we look forward is going to be to increase the target amount that we have invested and deployed in the core portfolio to 400 million. And within our bands, kind of our risk tolerance bands of the core portfolio, we also recommend increasing the maximum top end of that to 450 million. So the idea and practice would be to, kind of as Deputy Treasurer Travelstead alluded to, maybe deploy some of the excess cash that the county has now into the core portfolio, maybe incrementally getting closer to a target of 400 million, and then expanding that range to 450 million, just kind of to manage fluctuating cash flows kind of as, as you've seen this month with kind of large inflows of property taxes. And then certainly as we get to the fall to kind of give us a bit more flexibility with those ranges. But we think that the portfolios are a really healthy spot right now. And, you know, given what you've seen cash flow wise and some of the growth, it seems to be prudent to go ahead and increase the target and maximum for the core portfolios and be able to set the portfolio up to really manage through consistent earnings as we go into different interest rate environments. Now, if we look specifically at the operating core portfolio, this is the core investment portfolio and how we look at asset allocation and how we look at our target duration. This is unchanged from the previous quarter. The pie chart on the left represents our strategic asset allocation target. This is how we would like to diversify the portfolio over time between treasuries, agencies, municipals, and super nationals. The pie chart on the right is what the portfolio is reflecting as of March 31st. You can see we are overweight treasuries. I would expect of as we navigate the next quarter and as we're able to add a bit more to the core, we'll be able to take advantage of some really attractive agencies that we see in the market and kind of get closer to our strategic targets. But a portfolio with a little over 50% treasurer, 50% agencies and a deep, good allocation of treasuries, and then getting exposed to some of the asset classes like supernationals or municipals, you know, when they may come into the market, will still set the portfolio up most effectively down the road. And then our duration profile remains being managed to a zero-to-five-year all treasury benchmark. Our target duration is just over two, close to 205 or 210. And right now, we're very duration neutral. Again, we want to be poised for, you know, if we do see a downturn in interest rates, making sure the portfolio is, is going to be there to kind of really work well with the liquidity portfolio, really anchor in yield longer term to, as more of a risk management tactic along with a, a strategic tactic and remain very evenly, remain very evenly allocated from a maturity cadence perspective. So you can see the percentage breakdown of how the portfolio is allocated from zero to five years. We want to remain at those allocations where the county will almost always have 25% of the core portfolio coming due under one year. Provides more than adequate and kind of backstop to the liquidity components that we just talked about. We jump to the next slide. This is looking at the maturity activity coming up over the next quarter, both in the laddered liquidity portfolio and the operating core portfolio. In the operating core that you can see on the right, barring any cash flow needs that come up, those would be reinvested into the strategic targets that we just discussed in the previous slide. And then the laddered liquidity portfolio, those matured areas need to be earmarked to known liabilities, whether it be payroll or debt service. And so we've been working closely with the Treasurer's Office to make sure that those are being matched to the appropriate liabilities. And should any excess CAC kind of come out of those maturities, they would be potentially redeployed, potentially short-term or kind of as directed, should that opportunity come up. But the ladder, look what, laddered liquidity portfolio has worked out really well to really create a lot of transparency in terms of matching liabilities as we look out six to 12 months. And then we've been working closely with the Treasurer's Office to kind of manage that process and redeploy excess cash if that were to come up. And then the last piece here is just looking at the bond proceed maturities as we go forward over the next quarter. These will continue to be reinvested to match cash flows and really being reinvested as directed by the Finance Division. It's not reflected here. Some materials were produced prior to receiving some of the new proceeds from the recent issue. But we were able to invest around that 18 million. I believe that's settled on May 11th. The yield in those investments ranged from about 440, I believe, to just over 5%. So again, just a product of the market we're in. But really strong investment for the bond proceeds. And, you know, the ability to continue to match those class, cash flows, but earn that, earn that return is, you know, something we'll continue to take advantage of. And then just to summary on the last slide here, reiterating our recommendation to increase the core target to 400 million and increasing the core maximum range to 450. And then both the bond proceeds and laddered liquidity portfolios recommendations just maintain the existing strategy. Thank you very much. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? I, um, I was trying to remember the one question. Oh, as we, I just wanted to thank you. I usually meet with you ahead of time and ask all these questions. The zero to five, I guess for both of you, the zero to five years, which are the core. I noticed on the slide, it shows, please teach me. It shows the earlier as like higher percentages. And then once, as we go out to the five-year, I thought that, can you explain that to me, please?
Yeah, Rashad, do you want to?
Yes.
Sorry. And I just want to make sure, Madam Chair, is this slide that I have of this slide you're referring to?
I don't see a slide up.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, at the bottom, the duration profile.
Great.
Perfect. Yeah, so that bottom chart is showing you. The, the first column is showing you the target duration for the benchmark and the portfolio. And that's where the 205 comes at. So that's our target overall duration for the core portfolio. How you break that down is kind of how you decide to allocate the portfolio across zero to five years. You could think of, you could get to that two duration in a number of different ways. You could be very short and very long, that averages to a two duration. Or you could have kind of more even maturity cadence across the zero to five years. And if you look at the actual composition of holdings in the treasury benchmark, it does weight more of the duration to the zero to three-year sector. And so we're, our goal is to match the allocation there that you see. And so the target portfolio is the compensation of, the composition of treasuries, basically all treasury issuances from zero to five years. And just the product, the makeup of the benchmark and the issuance that's available in the market of treasuries, that's just how the benchmark is weighted, where there's just a higher allocation in the zero to three-year sector. And so in terms of getting to the duration that we want, in terms of having mature cadence that we want, and also linking that core portfolio in terms of maturities coming due to kind of buffer the cash position, we want to match that pretty closely, which is why we're somewhat weighted towards the short end of that spectrum. So instead of 20% coming due in every single bucket, it's a little bit weighted toward the zero to three-year.
Okay, thank you.
And one thing I, I might add, Madam Chair, is that also having that weighted on the front end there, it also, if, if there was something to happen kind of nationally where the treasury defaults on the debt and we need to draw down some of these investments, having a little bit more maturing in that one-to-two-year timeframe will allow us to kind of weather the storm, so to speak, for a little bit longer before we'd have to dip into other reserves. Kind of two problems.
And so that increased amount. And so that increased amount of the four hundred thousand, the targeted four or four hundred and fifty million, would you'll you'll still have to decide where you're putting which duration you're putting it.
Correct. That's that's correct. And Rashad, you may be able to speak to that if you already have a strategy in mind there.
Yep, that's exactly right. So when we're talking about getting closer to that four hundred million, we would be talking about deploying it to this exact strategy that you see here. And that's both for the asset allocation perspective and the duration perspective. So just looking at duration, you can see that the portfolio is already pretty duration neutral. So in order to remain that way, I think you could expect a relatively even allocation across the zero to five. So it wouldn't be that we're just going to deploy longer term in the four to five year space. It would be relatively even. In the current market, especially when we talk about kind of risk management of navigating interest rate cycles and maintaining consistent earnings, it's going to be really important and opportunistic to lock in yield in the three to five year space so that you can, the county can earn, you know, upwards of four, four and a half percent for multiple years, should we see a downturn in rates. But in order to stay duration neutral in this portfolio, I would expect a relatively even distribution across the zero to five year spectrum to kind of stay around that two to ten duration. And then from an asset allocation perspective, we would probably try to get closer to the strategic asset allocation target by adding agencies into the portfolio and reweighting that. That'll all be predicated on what, you know, issuance and what's available in the market at the time.
Awesome. Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you for the the question. There any other questions?
Any other questions? Well, thank you so much for the guests, Madam Chair.
Yeah, no questions, but just again, wanted to comment there that when we talk about asset allocation, we do talk about diversifying some of that core. Because again, you can see how much we have in treasuries and agencies. And as Rashad talked about, we do need to diversify that a little bit. Maybe we'll see an opportunity to buy a supranational or we'll buy some commercial paper. As you can see there, we don't have a lot of it. And we'll look at, is that a good time to buy it? Or because of the debt ceiling and some other things going on, maybe we won't. It kind of depends on, you know, what's going on nationally in the economy and what the Fed issues. So lots of moving pieces that we look at, as does GPA. But you know, all those things in your mind when you're hearing the news, you know, at six o'clock every day and then go, hmm, I wonder what the treasury is doing. I wonder what GPA is thinking about. Oh, okay. Maybe I'll maybe I'll call Nancy or I'll call Ryan and see what we think about that. So again, those are just parts that we deal with every day, every week, but but want you to to know that and think it through because I know you do. And we love hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Deputy Travels.
So that will finish up the GPA portion of the presentation. And Madam Chair, we'll turn it back to you with our other office news.
Thank you. Yes, quarter miss minchad, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes, this is some of the other office news that we we like to include. And the first one is talking about that local community impact initiative that that I've mentioned before in several meetings. And just wanted to update you on that. And again, we're hoping to put the policy and the procedures together. And we've come a long way. We've had several meetings of the work group and and talked through some ideas on this. And we also talked with the economic development because this is a pilot and we wanted to test it again. So we we have those numbers. And right now, we just felt like we weren't ready to put that on the agenda as a separate item, but still want to keep you updated each quarter on it. We're estimating that this will probably come back to you in August, which is our our next Board of Finance with the full policy and procedures done and have that policy incorporated into a new investment policy for you in August. And that tracks on what we do every year, that after the May meeting, we get to work on reviewing our investment policy and present that to you in August. So we're right on track for that, really. But I kind of wanted to get it to you earlier, but it didn't happen. So we'll we'll keep working on it until it does. The the Government Investment Officers Association, I mentioned the last quarter where we took our investment policy and sent it to this association, which is a national association that actually reads and provides feedback and grades your investment policy. We were hoping to get that back by this meeting, but we did not. So know that we're keeping track of that. And as soon as we get that new one, we'll bring it to the investment working group and the investment committee as well. So we'll we'll get the word out to you all on how we did. Thirdly, is the new property tax information website is going live June first. And if you've looked at the treasurer's website, you'll see that one of the key fun key functions we have on our website, much like the assessor, is we have open public access to searching properties and finding out their taxes and and those kinds of things. And we have been in conjunction with the assessor, you know, moving to the cloud. And so in moving to the cloud, we just decided that it was best to match what the what the assessor has for the search functionality and not have two separate ones that that work differently. It makes sense that we keep that likeness and people understand how to use it, not have two separate uses of how you search, how you do this. No, we can, we can make it all common and it'll be much more consumer friendly, if you will. So that's going live June first. So everybody on June second, get up, turn your computer on and goes, go to my website and search your property. Okay, see how you like it and give me some feedback. And I think in talking with Ryan, I did learn that that old website or currently what we have on it is over fifteen years old. So it was really due to be kind of revamped and, you know, upgraded. So so I might call you June third and see how it is. The other one is, as as most of you know, it's been time to have community outreach and festivals in your districts. So we've been attending those. And and actually, when you look at our performance measures, you're going to see we've already exceeded the number of annual outreaches that that we thought we were going to have. So that's really good. This is just more gravy on top. I know Commissioner Benson's is coming up, the evening in paradise. And we'll definitely be there and be be happy and joyful to talk to those Westsiders and all those people in in your commission area, Commissioner Benson. Let's see the next page. Can't get this apart. It's just talking about if you have any questions. I know in the appendix, we have our performance measures and we have that tax maintenance report. If you had any questions on that, we're glad to entertain that. Now Travels, Deputy Travels, excuse me, I think we have some new managers in the audience that we might want to introduce. I can't see them.
Yeah, indeed.
You'll have to do that. All right.
Definitely. I believe we we have introduced previously Mike Gutierrez, the new manager in the accounting area. We have Michelle Rodriguez, who's the manager in our customer service area, and Janessa Garcia, which has taken over the delinquent accounts department. So, yeah, we had some retirements and some new people come in.
Thank you and welcome. Or it sounds like it's a new good upgrade. But you all have been here. Awesome. Thank you for your continued leadership.
Excellent. So if at that, Madam Chair, did you have anything else to add?
No, I've I finished my presentation. So, Madam Chair, if you would like to continue on the agenda with number four, thank you.
Quarterly investment, I move to give advice and consent to the proposed quarterly investment strategy is outlined in the Board of Finance report. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, you have your pass unanimously.
Thank you so much, Chair and Commissioners.
Thank you. We have Festival Flamenco in our district, Madam Chair, this Friday.
This Friday.
At the Veterans Memorial.
That's right. Thank you very much. I'll be back in town. So I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. And last just to announce, and thank you Deputy Travels and all the folks who showed up today. Excited and thank you all. I announced for the next Board of Finance meeting, Tuesday, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, four P M. here at the Ken Sanchez Commission chambers. If there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too, Madam Chair.